Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley?
Present.
Councilmember Losi?
Here.
Councilmember Mobley?
Here.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Trent?
Here.
Our first item today is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, which was April 9th through April 15th, 2023. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and public safety dispatchers are the first and most crucial contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activity by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of informed or information obtained from citizens who telephone the Fortuna Police Department Communication Centers. And whereas the city of Fortuna is served by a group of men and women working as public safety dispatchers for the law enforcement, fire, rescue, and medical emergency response agencies in the community. And whereas these dedicated individuals work tirelessly and answer our citizens' calls for help and dispatch the first responders to the scene of those emergencies. Whereas these public safety dispatchers have demonstrated loyalty, commitment, and dedication in the performance of their duties. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the public safety dispatchers working in the city of Fortuna are valuable asset to our community at large. These professionals who toil with little recognition 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to save lives and provide assistance are unsung heroes. Let it be further resolved, it is for these reasons that the city of Fortuna and the city council in the city of Fortuna wishes to honor them and proclaim April 9th through April 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Teleconference Week. In this, I'm losing my line here. In the city of Fortuna, the city council and the city of Fortuna appreciates their commitment and dedication to their profession and congratulates them for a job well done. Signed this day, April 20th, in the city of Fortuna, in the state of California, and witnessed thereby the seal of the Fortuna.
My name is Paige White, and for the past five years, I have been a public safety dispatcher with the Fortuna Police Department and currently serve as the Fortuna Police Employees Association's Secretary. Sorry, no, that just changed. I'm the treasurer now. And tactical dispatch for the countywide SWAT team. The communications team and I appreciate the recognition from the Fortuna City Council in honor of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and in turn would like to recognize the council for investing in the safety of our community. During a time where there is a national shortage of law enforcement officers and public safety dispatchers, the council approved a 12% raise, bringing the Fortuna Police Department to a competitive pay rate with our allied agencies. The department has been successful in recruiting both officers and dispatch laterals, who are currently undergoing their background checks. The experience and knowledge they bring to the table will benefit the department and the community greatly. So we just want to thank you guys as well.
Thank you very much. Our next item is an introduction of the new treatment plant operator, Russ Williams, and Chris is going to do that by Zoom.
Right here.
Oh. Well, I have a note here that says Chris is going to do that by Zoom.
Thank you.
He has a presentation he's going to share.
Yeah. Chris Christensen, Chief Treatment Plant Operator, City of Fortuna. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am pleased to introduce the newest member of the wastewater treatment plant division, operator and training Ross Williams. Ross lives in Rio Del. Whoops, can you play it from the beginning, please? Ross lives in Rio Del and comes to the city with a lot of experience in various industries. He was most recently a utility forester for a PGE contractor, maintenance tech for Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, and he spent many years with Eureka Oxygen. Well, oh. Okay. I have another one. Just keep going. While working for Eureka Oxygen, he visited the city often, servicing fire extinguishers. And so he's very familiar with the city and even some of our current staff. Still, he's a brand-new wastewater treatment plant operator, and he will need to learn the ropes. For example, oh. For example, we have technical difficulties. For example, we started him out with hosing. As you can see here, he'll need to learn how to hold the hose properly. Trying to hose this area down while grasping the middle of the hose with only one hand isn't going to work very well. Next, we had him assist with cutting some grates, some grading, as he was very proud of that. There he is. He also assisted with unclogging some plant piping. He seems really happy about it. Of course, I don't think he fully realizes yet what's coming out of the other end of this pipe. He'll learn. In fact, I think he learned pretty quickly after he unclogged this check valve. It was a delicate process. In the end, he surprised us. We had him pull weeds. He was happy there, just playing in the sand. We also began training him on the loader and the bobcat. I think he looks happy here, too, but then the bobcat was too hot for him, maybe, or he was afraid of it, or he was so happy that he started to dance. Then we had him clean out a filter. He started out okay, but then he may have gotten a little confused. In fact, really confused, but we straightened him out. Overall, Ross is fitting in great. He's learning fast, studying our schematics, and training on our spreadsheets. He is definitely already part of the team. In fact, on one of his first days on the job, I asked him if he brought a lunch. He said he was fine. He had a couple of bananas. So it really didn't take long at all with us before he just went bananas. I look forward to working with Ross and seeing him further develop as a treatment plant operator. Ross, would you like to come on up?
Thanks, Chris. Oh, my gosh. It's kind of, it's really cool and funny to be here, after, like Chris said, spending so much time here with the city, doing all the fire extinguishers, and going to all the different departments. Yeah, the environment, I just, I'm super happy. I say it every night when I get home, that I think I'm where I belong.
Nice. Good to have you, Ross.
Hey. Yeah, and I hope it lasts a while. And I'll bring my best, and I'll keep that smile going.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Welcome to Fortuna.
Welcome, Ross. I know you've been here about 20, 30, 40 times. And Chris, I have it on good authority from his neighbor that he can barbecue pretty well, too.
I'll give him a Dutch oven.
Well, also barbecue.
Don't be like Joel, like, oh, you have some construction? Round it.
Now we have oral comments from the public. Anybody who has a comment that's about anything that's not on the agenda tonight, this is the time.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Chief, everybody. My name's James Graham. I'm a Fortuna resident and a proud Fortuna resident. I love our beautiful city. I recently became a board member of Riverlife Foundation. We plan on continuing Sean's work, cleaning up the city. Garbage really piling up with him gone right now. Going to have a lot of work to do. And we're having this plaque made to go on the Dennis Wint Memorial Trail. This is going to go right beside the plaque that's already there. I want to present this to the council. And I want to say, we got a really good police chief. I'm really proud of this city. I just, now meeting you, Mayor, nice to meet you. I've walked with him on the Dennis Wint Memorial Trail with Mike, and, sorry, I speak all the time, but I still get nervous every time. But I just want to say that we'd appreciate any support we can have when we start cleaning up the city again and continuing on with Sean's legacy. He was a big part of this community, and he's really well missed. And, you know, we all have problems in our life or whatever, but we need to keep this city clean and safe. And, I mean, this place is pretty close to the city of Eureka, and I don't want to see it turning into Eureka. So I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean did do a lot of good for the city. We will miss him.
Hi, my name is John Battini. I'm actually the store manager at Rite Aid Drugstore. I'm actually, I submitted an application for Measure E to be part of the committee, so just wanted to introduce myself. And I see a lot of familiar faces on your board here, coming out of my business. I appreciate you shopping our community. You know, so you got some contacts, excuse me, some contacts with the Redwood Shopping Center that, and the Safeway Store, and the Dollar Tree, and Subway, that'd be interesting if we could have some of the revenues kind of generated to help kind of...
Is it the F-Bid Committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, like I said, I turned the application in, begin the month. I wasn't sure how this program occurred, and was approached by a couple of people to maybe start partaking in it. So just want to introduce myself, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? CNN will close, our closed public comment. Move to the consent calendar. Tonight, we have 12 items. We have all of the department's monthly reports. We have report of dispersments, approval of the 2022 Annual Housing Progress Report, and submittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the California Office of Planning and Research. And then approval of the 2022 General Plan Annual Progress Report for submittal to the State Office of Housing and Community Development and the State Office of Planning and Research. And the last one is permit approval for the Chief of Police to pursue a United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development Loan and Grant Assistance Program application for updates associated with the BodyWorn Camera Program. Does anybody want to pull any of them?
I would like L, please.
L? Yeah.
Okay. I think this maybe has changed a little bit, but in looking through this particular request, it looks like even with the Rural Development Loan and Grant Assistance Program, if that were approved, the city would still be on the hook for somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000, which I think at this particular point in time, we've had a lot of supplemental budget requests. We have a big project with the development of the rehabilitation of the police department. We're not really sure as to what the contingencies are going to be there. So I think with this particular request, that's, it's going to be questionable whether we could move forward with that kind of promise for that kind of money. That's my thought.
Well, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Losi. A lot of the original numbers in the staff report have since changed because of essentially the estimate and quoting process that PD has gone through, starting back in October. So we were anticipating a large increase in not only service provider fees, but also with equipment prices. And since the staff report has been authored, we actually received our last two estimates, which were really part of our informal competitive bidding process. But we're quite confident now that we can get what we need at the police department for upgrades to the BodyWorn Camera Program over the course of the next five years, somewhere around $120,000 total. So originally, the thought was to integrate videos, sorry, cameras, to capture video that would work with the BodyWorn Cameras and have those installed in the vehicles, but it just proved to be a little too cost prohibitive. So we're essentially in a situation where we have a current program that is out of warranty. It's beyond its life. And so, you know, the city and the department have an important decision to make, which is, A, to continue transparency by utilizing BodyWorn Cameras in the field, or because they're not required by state law to reel that back and not deploy them in the field. My recommendation would be to keep that sort of transparency because it is an effective tool, in particular for me and my administration, to look at, routinely look at how our officers are handling calls in the field, and also to protect them when they, when we do receive malicious allegations or complaints. So the pricing looks good. Again, to reemphasize, it looks like we can get this total project down to about $120,000. And the council will shortly be receiving a recommendation for Measure E for $65,000 toward BodyWorn Cam. The most important aspect is not repeating essentially what we have now, which was when this program was implemented back in 2017. The department did not come up with a way at that time to continue funding for the BodyWorn Camera Program. So we do have Measure E. We have a little bit in our AB 109 fund. There's also asset forfeiture, but it's my estimation that we could probably pay for the entirety of the five-year program in two years. The USDA grant essentially would be the 55%, 45% matching, and so that would alleviate, you know, half of that price tag for the city. So this, this request tonight is just for authorization from the council to permit the department and myself to go after the USDA grant, to pursue it.
Question. How long does, is the loan process? Do you know? Do we have any idea?
The, I don't...
How long it will be once we submit till when they would say yes or no?
So this particular grant with USDA is year-round, and so they've been pretty responsive in the past, you know, a month to two months for a final answer from USDA.
Okay. And you're saying that this is a five-year? So isn't that what I'm reading, that the length of these are about five years? So is it just something we're going to look at every year in the budget of adding, so that it's a continuous process?
Yes, absolutely. My recommendation, Councilmember Mobley, would to, would be to, after we pay for the current upgrade that's needed to BodyWorn Camera, that maybe Measure E funded a certain amount of money every year. We could reel that way back from $65,000 to, you know, anywhere between $5,000 and $12,000 a year, just to put some money away, because every five years, we're going to be up against this wall.
Thank you.
So with this particular grant, the USDA, the city council has to give authorization to move forward with application for the grant?
Yeah, so this, the answer to the question is, this is not a city policy. This is something that during the last grant cycle, USDA had indicated that before we submit grants, they want the council to approve the pursuit of the grant.
Okay. And in pursuing or authorizing pursuit of the grant, that's just authorizing moving forward with the grant without the specific numbers that we're looking at here?
That's correct.
And then down the road, then, you would come back to the council with those specific numbers?
With those numbers and an SBR.
Okay. Are you looking at, for the $120,000, new cameras, or are you utilizing the existing cameras?
No, another excellent question. So the PD's current BodyWorn Camera System is server-based. All technology with all vendors have moved away from servers and are now cloud-based. That's ease of use for end users, such as our video going to the district attorney's office, or, you know, any other purpose that we need to distribute those for. So it's all server-based now, so going forward, we won't be responsible for keeping up with the cost of these expensive servers, which, you know, they only last a certain amount of years, too, and it's $20,000 for a new server for that program. So getting back to the original question, yes. Yeah.
Okay. And in being network service, it's probably going to be a little bit more secure as opposed to a in-house server?
Yes, it's a great comment. So all the technology being used is, comes with military-grade encryption, so.
Cool.
And could I add one thing? So Councilmember Losi, the chief would include an estimate of what the project costs are in the application, and so I think the estimated project cost would be consistent with the estimate the chief shared with you of $120,000, not the amount that's in the staff report, which that new quote came in after the staff report was already published.
Correct.
I'd feel much better with the $120,000 than the $30,000.
And that will be the basis for the application.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? CNN, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So moving on. City Council Business. Our first item of business is approve the annual Fortuna Business Improvement District fiscal year 2022-23 budget and supplemental budget request attachment.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So I'll be presenting this staff report. It's fairly brief, and it's really just a formality of something that the council's provided direction on before. But in August, the city council directed staff to hire an F-Bid administrator and to move forward with F-Bid as an internal function of the city. A formal budget really wasn't adopted. The current budget recognizes a revenue that comes in from the assessment that's charged to the city's businesses, and it also includes an expenditure of a matching amount the city normally contributes, which is equivalent to the F-Bid assessment. So really, it is a formality to update the current budget to include the anticipated detailed expenditures for this year. I worked on preparing this budget with the F-Bid administrator, Morgan Dodson, our Finance Director, Aaron Felmy, and it reflects the year-to-date costs that have been experienced so far, and then a projection out to the end of the year, which is not much further. This budget includes salaries, supplies, professional services, including the contract that the city moved forward with, with the Chamber of Commerce, to provide assistance in between the city having staff available and the F-Bid closing, the old F-Bid closing and the city bringing on staff, includes building rent, advertising, training, and et cetera. The F-Bid administrator reviewed this budget with the advisory committee, and the advisory committee recommended that the council adopt this budget for the current fiscal year. And so a copy of the budget's attached to the staff report, but with the two funding sources, there's approximately $126,000 that's available, and this expenditure budget is for $106,000, so $20,000 less than is available for expenditure. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the recommendation is for the council to approve a supplemental budget request and incorporate the F-Bid budget into the current fiscal year.
Any questions from council?
Couple of little ones.
Go ahead.
So we, there's talk of the special events, and as I recall, just for clarification, we're still under a contract with Chamber to finish out the special events for this year?
Yeah, and really, the last special event that was done was a home and home-based small business market expo. I think that was the final name that we came up with. So the Chamber has really, aside from some general promotion and advertising, the Chamber's fulfilled the majority of that contract, and they've been paid. So there's, there's not a whole lot left for the Chamber. And as the council may know, the Chamber's in transition, and they're working on bringing on a new executive director. So the Chamber has pretty much completed that work that's with what they've done to date.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Okay.
Looking at the budget itself, and I apologize if I ask this question, because we've seen this before, but under the professional services, it's 6025 is the line item. There's listed $44,320. Exactly what does that cover?
Yeah, that's, that's a budget category, and it includes the assessment. So of the, of the funding that comes in through the assessment, 60% of it goes back to the core areas, so that's included in that area. And it's also, there's a portion of that that was broken down from what the, what the Chamber did, I believe, under that, under those categories. It was also lumped in there. So the assessment's back to the core areas, and then the contract with the Chamber was distributed amongst that, too.
Eighteen, nineteen. Okay, so roughly $20,000 to Chamber.
I'm not sure of your, what's your question?
It's, it looks like the split between the downtown merchants and all the different units plus Chamber. Chamber's about $20,000, and...
Chamber, the Chamber contract was about $16,000. And so I don't have a breakdown with me right now. Aaron, our Finance Director, may have some more, but the cost of the Chamber were distributed into a number of different ones, so including advertising. You know, it's not, there wasn't one lump sum item for that, that contract. But if you look at the total assessed amount, you could figure out 60% goes back to those core areas. But again, I don't have it broken down. This is in a format that's consistent with the city budget, and, you know, we didn't include a detailed budget. I think we did include it in a past meeting, but we don't have it now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I have one question. Since this position is now considered a part-time position, does the city going to still give a full match?
So that's up to the council in the next budget year? So, you know, the council can continue to do that and match the assessments. One of the things that we're considering recommending, this year, this year's budget's set, but next year, we're thinking about recommending a flat rate. One of the, you know, a couple of the reasons why we'd consider doing that are because we have to wait till the assessments come in to figure out how much the money is, and if we, if we make an estimate and include a flat amount in the budget, then that can be distributed sooner without actually seeing what those assessments are when all the business licenses are renewed. So, and then the other part of that is there'd be some certainty for the city on the exact dollar amount. And so we'll probably ask the F-Bid Committee to make a recommendation to the council, but right now, that'll really be for next fiscal year, not the current fiscal year.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? CNN will close public comment. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental budget request to incorporate F-Bid budget into fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Roll call vote. Councilmember Conley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Our next item is authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract for radio communication equipment for the police facility remodel project, Resolution 2023-09, and approve a supplemental budget request. Staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, along with several others, including Lieutenant Eberhart, to speak about the staff's recommendation to award a Silksource contract with Silky Communications for the radio upgrade work that will be ultimately part of the police facility remodel project. I'd also like to note, with us this evening, virtually here via Zoom, is Jamie Hughes. He's the sales engineer with Silky that we've been working with closely in identifying the various options that the city police department has as part of the upgrade component of this project. And so by all means, if the council has questions, you know, specifically relating to the radio upgrade itself, he'll be available to answer those as well. Before I kick it over to Lieutenant Eberhart to talk a little bit about kind of the background and the need for the project, in addition to some of the due diligence we did and some of the options we considered, I kind of wanted to give a quick refresher where this effort fits into the overall police facility remodel project. It's, it's kind of parallel, but they're not necessarily, you know, they're two separate projects. They just happen to be coinciding at a time that's really advantageous for us here, for the department and their needs, in addition to where we are with the police facility remodel project. So as you will hear from Lieutenant Eberhart here in a moment, the communications upgrades have been, you know, quite needed. in addition to where we are with the police facility remodel project. So as you will hear from Lieutenant Eberhart here in a moment, the communications upgrades have been, you know, quite needed for some time. And so it's very good that we're able to do both of them together now or consider them together now. However, due to the specialty nature of the radio communications work, staff did elect to move forward with bidding the police facility remodel project as a single contract and then to, you know, pursue an alternate route ultimately for the radio communications due to the nature of the work, which we'll get into a little bit more in detail. So with that, we have, staff has been spending about the last six to eight months during the project timeline, working together with Silky in order to identify options that we have considered and will be presenting some here this evening. And ultimately, we are making a recommendation for a path forward in order to complete the communications upgrades. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Eberhart.
Good evening. I do have to say that it's kind of fitting that this is on the same night with the dispatch proclamation. So our communication center dispatches for our agency, Riadell Police Department, Ferndale Police Department, Fortuna Fire, and we also assist in mutual aid. And our communication system is critical. We currently use a Magicom radio dispatching system. In doing the research on this, the existing radio equipment was installed circa 2000, for the best of our knowledge. We couldn't get the exact date. In 2015, the department's radio interface was upgraded with the Magicom radio dispatching system. The upgrade addressed computers and software, not the existing radio equipment itself. The upgrade came with a five-year service agreement. At that time, through Six Rivers Communication, Magicom had local service representative present at that time. And then in 2018, we learned that the company Magicom, who we have the system through, went out of business. Magicom was purchased by another company that purchased their company's name, patents, and products. However, at that time, it brought some major concern forward. Our dispatch supervisor brought this forward up the chain of command, and he's like, hey, will Magicom be able to uphold our service agreement if something does go wrong, if we have a service issue or we need repairs? And part of that was because when the company sold, we didn't have a local, no longer, there was a local representative. So when the company sold, Six Rivers Communication did not maintain that local representative through Magicom. So if we did need some kind of assistance, getting that promptly to a critical system was quite risky. The service agreement is, you know, was five years back in 2015. It's long expired. The current critical system, it's not supported. It's in desperate need of replacement. Throughout the years, concerns were repeatedly brought forward regarding the communication system, and they were discussed. Ultimately, it was determined that this project would be best addressed during the transition into the new police facility. And we all know that that's been a long process working towards that. But we are happy to say that that day is just around the corner. So that's why we're here tonight. With this project and what we had encountered in the past, it was very important that we found an insurable, reliable radio contractor with a local connection. That was our biggest concern. We didn't want what happened previously to happen again. So we looked at this, and we have a longstanding working relationship with Silky Communications, formerly RWS. They have local technicians, and with their partnership with Silky, they have a vast amount of experience and resources as well. Silky Communications Solutions is a very big company with a lot of experience. With the two of them paired up, it put us in a really good situation to work with them, and working with Silky Communications is in the city's best interest. So near the end of the project design phase for the new facility, staff sought to include the new radio tower in bid, in the bid package with the prime contractor, and solicited a proposal from Silky Communications for the radio and the communications equipment. The proposal included different options for addressing the existing radio communications during the move. Number one, move the existing dispatch console equipment into the new facility and install new wiring and supports where needed. To be frank, this first option is not a viable option. To move outdated, unsupported equipment and systems, it's a gamble with critical systems that we do not recommend. The second one was to replace the existing system with a new dispatch console system, and they included within their proposal three options from three separate vendors. So it was Magicom, Mineshare, and Zetron. And these are all large companies. So we looked at this. This is the only viable option. It's important for us to do our due diligence in researching this. So we went ahead and said, hey, we need to select a team. We put myself. I got the current dispatch supervisor. We reached out to our former dispatch supervisor, who has a lot of expertise in this area, as well as worked with Silky Communications. And Jamie was a huge help through this process and was completely objective in providing the pros and cons on each system and helping facilitate vendor presentations, ask detailed questions. Additionally, through our former dispatch supervisor, he currently works for our RMS system, our records management system. So we wanted something that's going to work good with our current system. So we asked him to reach out and find a, find an agency in California that's utilizing Mineshare, that's also utilizing that same system, our same records management system. So he provided that information. Our current dispatch supervisor reached out to them, spoke with their radio technician, spoke with their dispatch supervisor, and everything was pointing towards Mineshare, as Mineshare is a company that will meet our current needs, our future needs of the department, and the bottom line is it comes in at the lowest price. So it's our recommendation that in the attached proposal by Silky Communications that we proceed with selection under public safety and amateur, that's in the COAX installation for Phase One, and then for Phase Two, under dispatch console, that we proceed with Mineshare. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to Brendan Byrd, unless there's any questions now, or if not, I'll be here.
All right. Thank you, Matt. So as I touched on before, we elected not to pursue the radio upgrades as part of the larger project, given kind of the special nature of the work and kind of the due diligence that we needed to do ultimately to develop and select, you know, the option that would be best for the city. So as Lieutenant mentioned, we worked extensively with Silky, and we've converged upon recommending the option as presented, which is that we do, you know, the sections of the proposal that are included in Attachment A, Phase One and Phase Two work, which would include installing the antennas, installing the cabling and the building penetrations, all the items necessary, in addition to furnishing, installing a new hardware dispatch console system for the dispatchers all around. So and this would also include bringing over and installing the ham radio system that we currently have here at City Hall. This currently operates not only for, I guess you'd say, the amateur radio club and things like that, but it's also an important backup system or mechanism should the primary dispatch system go down. So we have some redundancy, and that would be included as part of this work as well. So to move forward with this project, staff recommend that the council authorize staff to forego competitive bidding, which is allowed under City Municipal Code Section 2.050.070 Subsection D, which specifically states that when it's found that a direct negotiated contract is in the best interest of the city due to the nature of the supplies, the equipment, or the contractual services, staff believe that this project and this proposal to award it this way fits the bill, given that, you know, this is a very specialized item of work that has taken a lot of, you know, iteration between vendors to kind of get right and make sure that we find one that works best for us as opposed to just putting it out for open bid without really understanding what our options or what our needs were. Additionally to that, I just wanted to note that, or to echo, I should say, Lieutenant Eberhart's sentiments on the need for local support and to know that we'd be working with a contractor and with a system that could be locally supported, in this case by Silky. And then lastly, insofar as the timeline to deliver this project, you know, we feel strongly that right now is the best time to do it. And not moving forward expeditiously with contracting for this project item, you know, could cause some overall delay to the project in general or the ability for the police to move into the facility when it's complete. So all these things, we feel point toward making this a good candidate for awarding the contract via sole source and not via conventional competitive bidding. Lastly, I just want to touch on cost. We have worked extensively with Silky on this proposal and gone back and forth in cost in some areas. And at this point, we do feel that it's competitive, and it's similar to other quotes that, you know, the department has received in the past few years, inflation-adjusted, of course. And we do not feel, or our staff at this point feel, that it's unlikely that if we were to competitively bid the project, that we'd, you know, be getting the same services for any cheaper. So with that, we have drafted Resolution 2023-09, which, if approved, would formally consent to the, to the, to foregoing competitive bidding for the project and awarding the project to Silky Communications via sole source. Should that resolution be approved, we would immediately move forward with contracting with Silky and would look immediately to start connecting our Silky team with our Sequoia Construction Team, who is our primary construction contractor, so we can start, you know, kind of coordinating those efforts and making sure that we are moving forward with those two projects concurrently and as efficiently as possible. So before ending here, I just want to touch a little bit on overall budget. So for the Phase One and Phase Two work that Matt had mentioned that is proposed, the overall cost would be about $207,000, and we are proposing to award up to $215,000. So we'd have a little bit of a contingency should we need to, you know, apply that at some point during the effort if we find, you know, field conditions are a little different, or we need to add or modify the contract in some way. It would give us a little bit of flexibility. And we would look to fund that using $80,000 in asset seizure funding. I have to say seizure's really slow. As I was practicing, I realized that's a hard word to say quickly for me. So with that, we do $80,000 of funding from there, and we would close the gap with up to $135,000 in general fund or Measure E, depending on which way the, you know, the budget process ends up going here in the next couple of months. We did talk about overall project budget in February when we took the Sequoia Construction Contract for an award recommendation. At that time, we were anticipating, you know, this effort being somewhere in the $150,000 range. We did not have this proposal available at the time, and we were going based on some old quotes that honestly are several years old by now. And we all know, based on inflation and other areas, sometimes things have been difficult to predict in exact cost. But that being said, you know, we did have that as a budgetary estimate at the time, and we had some other items overall, like our PG&E connection and our IT consultant, some things where it looks like we're going to come in a little bit cheaper than we forecasted. So overall, as it comes out in the wash, even with a potential $55,000, $60,000 increase in the communications work beyond what was originally forecasted, you know, we do feel confident overall that the project is on track to come in at the overall budget that we did present at that staff report and at that meeting. So with that, that's probably enough from me, but I'm happy to answer any questions on contracting or budgeting. Of course, we have Lieutenant Eberhart and Chief here, who can speak to things more specifically to the department. And as I mentioned, we do have Jamie Hughes, the sales engineer with Silky, who's the technical mind behind this. And I saw that we also have Kevin Back here, who is a local representative, who would, I think, be one of the people working on the implementation of the project. So with that, again, we have a team to answer any questions, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Questions from, or from council?
I would just say that I remember when the Magicom system went in, and if it was a student, I think it'd be a freshman in high school right now. And I don't think it would survive a move, the system, and be reusable. So this was an inevitable thing, and I'm glad that it was budgeted with the project, even if the numbers are a little different. Thank you.
Yeah, and we did consider that option, even if we all kind of knew it wasn't the best option. But we figured we had to put numbers to everything and think of all the last things. And honestly, to reuse a lot of that stuff and put new parts to it doesn't save a whole lot of money beyond just installing a new system at this point that we know would be more robust and kind of would last the test of time for hopefully the next 10, 20 years, so.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. So Brendan, when you talk about radio upgrades, you're talking about the Magicom either relocation or Magicom, a new system?
Yeah, so in the proposal, as you saw, we had several alternatives considered. So our existing system is a Magicom system, and one of the options was to just relocate what we have. One option was to replace that hardware and console system with a new Magicom system. So as the lieutenant noted, the old hardware is no longer supported, but that's not to say they wouldn't sell you something new that is current and modern and fully supported. But while we were looking at systems, we thought it important to look at some other options out there. So that's why in the proposal, you'll see there's two more, one from Zetron and one from Mineshare. Mineshare, after, you know, the lieutenant's due diligence period, is the one ultimately we think is the best fit, and it just so happens also to be the most economical option, but...
Okay, thank you. Going back to what the lieutenant was saying, circa 2008, might even go further back, circa Sergeant Steve Rogers, who was the communications supervisor, and I think had a lot to do with the Magicom, you know, system. But I remember probably two and a half years ago, going down into the basement because all of the computerized switches, computer modules in racks were heating up. And I had to be some type of an air conditioning unit that we had to put in to keep those units cool enough to be able to operate. So as I understand it, with Mineshare, this is a network-based program as opposed to in a computer module, which, again, would make it more secure and not totally eliminate the need for reducing the heat, but you wouldn't have the same problems that we have here with, with what we have with Magicom. Is that fair to say?
I believe that would, you know, ultimately, there's still a lot of components that generate heat. It is, it is less, and that is certainly true. One of the nice things about the new facility in general is we think about what we call the server room that's going to have all this equipment in addition to the other items necessary for the facility, is we're able to plan it also to be able to provide some of that other infrastructure that is necessary, you know, an air conditioner, active vents, things like that. So as opposed to being able to try and retrofit a somewhat unconventional space to function as it needs to with all this modern electronic component, we'll be able to think ahead on that and have those provided as part of the new facility.
Good. How many actual consoles are you looking at? It might be a question for Jamie or Kevin, I don't know. But there's at least three consoles in the police department at this point. Are there going to be three? And are those going to be compatible? I think the lieutenant mentioned with RIMS, this whole system compatible with RIMS as well? I know that's multiple questions.
Yes, that's correct. So these systems will tie into the three, three workstations within the dispatch facility at the new building. It is compatible with RIMS. One of the things we really liked about Mineshare is all of our dispatchers, because the Magicom, basically, it's the setup of the screen, the way it is and how you operate, and everybody's trained currently to use that. Mineshare is completely customizable, and we can literally make Mineshare look exactly like Magicom, so there's no learning curve when we implement the new system. So essentially, it's the, the radio as well as the software and computer setup. And years ago, it used to be that the state would contribute for radio and phones. Now it's only... it's only phones. So, that's when it was separated out. And now, you know, like I said, that's why we're putting the focus on, on the radio system. And the phone system is going to be a completely separate thing where the state's going to assist with that.
And as I understand it, Silky wouldn't be putting the tower, antenna tower in, but they'd put the antennas on the tower?
Correct. The, the two items we did leave with Sequoia Construction for the prime contract is they will furnish and install the tower and the grounding systems that'll be hooked up to. And Silky will come in and install all of the antennas on the tower and run the coax cable and, you know, install the, the hardware for the other components.
I'm really impressed with what Silky has presented here and what you have done, Matt, as well as Brendan. It's a good job. I'm glad to see it come about at this point. It just couldn't coincide any better as far as the timeframe goes with the new police department. Could you talk a little bit about the $50,000 difference? That's the PG&E upgrade that's going to cost us less now?
Yeah. So, like I had mentioned in the February meeting when we awarded the, the initial contract to Silky, we tried to take a step back and acknowledge all the other, other little items of work that were going on concurrently with the actual construction contract. And that includes working with our IT consultant, working with PG&E and AT&amp;T, working with our, with Silky and the communications work, in addition to working with our consultants and the other folks that are helping, you know, administer and, and do design during the construction project. So, with that, we did anticipate that the PG&E application and ultimately, the service upgrade for the building would likely be a little bit more. And as we've been working through it with PG&E, it seems like it's probably going to come in a little less. So, I think we had forecasted up to $100,000. And initial thoughts are between that and some of the contract work we'll have to do with Sequoia, maybe we're more in the $40,000 to $50,000 range. So, we haven't seen anything in writing yet, but we, we feel confident that that's what's being conveyed to us at this time. And, you know, if that's the particular case, then overall, you know, sometimes certain things get more expensive, certain things you forecast the other way. And we feel confident that the, you know, budget's still kind of on track to go to where we thought it was going to be a few months ago.
Thank you. And it sounds like that Majicom will run right up to the point where we switch over to Mineshare. So, there will be no downtime as far as the dispatch is concerned?
Correct. And that's actually one of the, the real, I guess, call it a charming feature about going this particular route is, you know, Silky's going to be able to come in, install all new equipment and have everything ready. And then it'll just be an instantaneous switch over. You know, otherwise, you do have to plan for a service outage or some other agency to provide backup while you're doing a switch over, or some other things that can present, you know, some risk or cost or complications in there. Going this route will make it a seamless transition.
Good. Thank you. Hopefully, the council is going to okay this. But I'd like to congratulate Jamie and Kevin. You guys have done a great job with this. So, we're looking forward to great things from you folks. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
You kind of touched on one that my question was. So, it sounds like basically dispatchers are going to be able to walk out of this station, walk into the next one, no new training.
That is absolutely correct.
That's great to hear. I'll open public comment. Anybody in the public have any comments on this? CNN, can I hear a motion?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2023-09 and read by title only, which I believe includes the cost in the resolution, right? I'm sure it does.
Oh, yes. A maximum, a maximum contract amount. Absolutely. Apologies.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Resolution 2023-09, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with Silky Communications for the police facility remodel project without formal competitive bidding. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Our next item is authorize the chief of police to execute a professional service agreement with Susan Price Consulting to complete and submit for a federal COPS grant, or COPS grant, hiring grant on behalf of the Fortuna Police Department.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Trent and Honorable Counsel. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. This request is really coming in the wake of the current recommendations by Major Z and the city's desire and ability to go after other funding for positions. So, tonight, staff is requesting approval from the council to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $5,000 to cover expenses associated with negotiating a professional services agreement with Susan Price Consulting. Susan Price is a retired city manager. I've provided in your packets a representative work product and also just a little bit about her background and experience. But she has a very good track record and proven success with this particular grant. And, you know, essentially, we would be looking at COPS for a three-year position funding grant for a new SRO. So, a little bit of the background, the U.S. Department of Justice awards millions of dollars to law enforcement agencies throughout the county, the country every year for hiring additional officers. The COPS program is a competitive federal grant program designed to provide direct funding for hiring in an effort to help local law enforcement organizations increase their community policing capacity and crime prevention efforts. So, we thought, you know, depending on how things work out with the current SRO program, the SRO program is something that should be continued in the City of Fortuna. And it's something that we want to kind of focus in on with this COPS grant, is just being specific to the SRO program. Susan Price Consulting, as I said, she has an excellent track record. She's very familiar with this grant. She does several of them every year for different jurisdictions and has a great, a great track record. So, in just our research for grant writers that are specific to COPS, we found very few options for local consultants that have the qualifications and track record that Susan Price Consulting has. This is a federal grant. It's somewhat tricky and requires about 60 man-hours of dedicated staff work. So, that's not something that we currently have available to us in the PD right now. And so, this is the next best, best option. The costs associated with hiring Susan Price for the professional grant services is approximately $85 per hour. But through our discussions, she feels that, you know, $5,000 for the service contract will cover all the needed time to prepare and submit the, the grant to the U.S. Department of Justice. Recommended council actions is receive staff presentation and review questions with staff, which I'm available for any questions that you may have, open and close public comments, and make a motion to find that the city is best served by negotiating with Susan Price Consulting for the professional services associated with the COPS grant.
Any questions from council?
Couple of things. She looks like she's very experienced putting in her resume, so to speak, in there and has done work up and down the High Five Corridor, basically, and has accomplished a lot and has served in a lot of positions. So, I think she's well-qualified for this. And $5,000 to research, develop, complete, and submit on behalf of the city is a, and she's been successful. So, just sounds like it would be a good, good fit.
Agreed. And just, you know, for further emphasis, this particular COPS grant funding for the positions, it's a three-year grant. So, if we were awarded the grant for a school resource officer program, those funds would cover three years of salary and benefits. It's not the total amount, but it is up around the $120,000, $125,000 per year rate. And there are some waivers, congressional waivers that are available that the city can submit to our local electeds. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll open this to public comment. Anybody in the public have any comments on this item? CNN will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to find that the city is best served by negotiating with Susan Price Consulting for professional services associated with the COPS grant, approve the supplemental budget request in the amount of $5,000 for the development, completion, and submission of the COPS hiring grant, and authorize the chief of police to execute a professional services contract with Susan Price Consulting to research, develop, complete, and submit on behalf of the Fortuna Police Department for the 2023 COPS grant.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. And this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? CNN, this passes. So, our next item. Approve a supplemental budget request and retired annuity help, extra help facility custodian position to the work chart, I guess that is, and appoint Patrick Kennedy as retired annuity, I'm having a problem with that word, extra help facility custodian Resolution 2023-10.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Cameron Moll put together the staff report, and I'll, and I'll be brief. But essentially, it's, it's very difficult to bring back a retired annuitant now. And it, and there's strict PERS rules for what we need to do. So, that's why the formality in the past, we'd be able to hire retired annuitant and just bring them on. Now, the, the PERS rules are a little more stringent and require the resolution. But very basically, we're down a couple of full-time positions and one part-time position in Parks. And, and those are, you know, due to reasons, you know, employees can't be here. It's not just because of normal hiring, but we have folks out on medical and other types of leave. And so, we're coming into the busy time of year for Parks. And so, it's critical that we have somebody to help do the janitorial in the facilities. And our Parks staff has been feeling overwhelmed by their responsibilities, both to start prepping all the fields for the spring and then be able to do the janitorial for the library, city hall, police station, admin buildings at Public Works and others. And so, if Pat came on, he would be performing that service for the, for the city. Pat worked for the city for a long period of time, which is really important. In the past, we've tried to contract with third parties, and we've had difficulties getting folks pass the background check or people that really just cut the level of performance that we needed to see at the city. The requirements and the limitations are, are our, on hours are in the staff report. The position would be hired at 17:35 an hour with a maximum number of hours, 960. So, the total potential cost impact is additional $16,660 a year. With only three months retaining this, with only three months remaining in this fiscal year, we expect the maximum cost between now and June 30th to be about $5,500. And so, that would be additional cost that would be taken up by the general fund. So, with that, staff's recommendation is that the council approve the addition of the extra help facility custodian to the org chart and approve the supplemental budget request and adopt Resolution 2023-10.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Of course.
More of a comment than a question. I do know that Parks and Rec have been impacted with regard to trying to take care of all the facilities with the, with the added custodial jobs that they, that they've had. And they're not really suited for necessarily all of the facilities and cleaning all of the facilities. In addition to that, I'm really glad, glad to see Pat back as, as our custodian. He was here, as Merritt said, a long time and just a great guy. So, that's my comment.
Okay. Open public comment. Anybody from the public have any comments on this item? CNN will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to add retired and new and extra help facility custodian position to the org chart, approve SBR and adopt Resolution 2310 and read by title only.
I'll second. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Resolution 2023-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna approving, appointing Patrick Kennedy as a retired annuitant extra help facility custodian. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Our next item is a public hearing, first reading to amend Title 15, Building and Construction of the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding Chapter 15.49, Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. Staff report.
Ms. Shore, will we be providing this staff report and going through a PowerPoint to describe the reasons and what is included in the Model Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance?
Honorable mayor and council members, so I'm really happy to be here tonight giving this draft ordinance presentation. So, the, we call it the MLLO. It's the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. And what it does is it establishes a minimum water efficiency standard in landscape design and management. It is a state, state standard or, you know, legislation, state law, that we adopt this. And the model, the term model out of that title comes from the fact that the state regulations are in an ordinance form. So, they're kind of presenting the model. And the requirement also is that now, it wasn't in the beginning, but now they are requiring that cities and counties actually adopt this instead of just relying on their rules. We actually have to go through the process of adopting an ordinance into our municipal code. So, that's why we're bringing this to you. It has already been in place to some degree. It hasn't probably been enforced as much as they would have liked over the, over the years. We have enforced it and reported, you know, our annual reports to them and all of that. But it's more, you know, we're just, going through this process is helping us to actually get more comfortable with it and, you know, enforce it a little bit better, implement it. So, it's, it refers to, it applies to irrigated water efficiency. And that's achieved, the efficiency is achieved through calculating a water budget for projects, for landscaping projects. And there's, I'll go over the degrees of project sizes that have different standards. I'll try to not make this too long. So, it uses soil, plants, irrigation, and other means for calculating those budgets. And then, so each landscaping site has its own factors that get, you know, factored into the equations. And then, there are two compliance pathways, they're called, or approaches, depending on the size and scope of the project. And so, the state standards and processes are designed to prevent water from being wasted on irrigated landscapes. And that second line, CCNR, that's the California Code of Regulations, that's where the MLLO resides. It has been in place actually since 1993 was first adopted. And then, it's been modified over the years. As part of the state legislation is that the Department of Water Resources actually has to review it every three years. And so, they do, there are opportunities for them to, you know, increase. They haven't increasing the, the requirements. In 2010, they mandated that city, that the cities implement it. But at that time, we could rely on their regulations. And then, in 2015, they adopted stricter standards, reduced the size of projects that apply. And then, I think, I'm not sure when SB 1383, I think maybe just a year ago was that adopted. And that requires that cities adopt this into the green code by a certain date. So, that's another reason we're doing it. It is, there is a deadline. And we are under the compliance plan, compliance plan to adopt this. So, the projects and exemptions that apply, so it applies to, so landscaping projects that are less than 500 square feet are exempt from the MLLO. That's pretty small. So, you know, it's, it's not, it doesn't give a lot of leniency there. Projects that are 500 square feet to 2,500 square feet fall under these prescriptive measures that I'll briefly describe. And then, the larger projects, 2,500 square feet or greater are called performance projects. And those are really, those are the big, most of the of the strict standards do apply to these larger projects, and those are really commercial projects and large multifamily projects. So there's, the prescriptive ones in that 500 to 2,500 square foot range are much easier to comply with, and those would be more of the single-family residential and smaller commercial projects. And then the projects, or the things that are exempt from the MLLO are anything with a registered historical site, botanical gardens that are open to the public, ecological restoration projects that don't require a permanent irrigation system, and then mined land reclamation projects that do not require permanent irrigation. So the prescriptive pathway, again, that's for the 500 to 2,500 square feet projects, those are intended for small-scale, single-family, and light commercial projects, and those are typically able to conform to requirements by limiting the use of irrigation. So a lot of, you know, for a single family, a lot of times they don't, they don't install irrigation projects. So then they, they're not actually exempt, but they have really minimal standards, agreeing to use a certain percentage of drought-tolerant plants and using mulch and compost, which will help retain water. And then, so yeah, they're exempt if there's no irrigation proposed, and for the prescriptive projects that do have irrigation, there's a list, they just refer to as Appendix D, and then they certify, the applicant certifies compliance. And so this is really, this is the checklist that's part of the application process, and they are agreeing to add a certain amount of compost to their soil, use a certain range of plants that are on, there's a database, and, you know, it's a pretty broad range of plants, but they have a lower amount of water needs, and mulching with a three-inch layer on top of the soil, limiting turf, so turf is actually not to exceed 25% of the landscaped area, and turf is not allowed in non-residential projects. There is an exception for recreational use of turf, so, you know, that adds some leniency there, I think, for what people usually are often used, you know, turf is defined as grass that's mowed. And then irrigation systems have a certain, certain requirements that will reduce water waste. So these are the things that for the 500 to 2,500 square foot projects, the applicant that are irrigated, the applicant agrees to conform to those. And those ones that I just went over, they're also a little bit easier on the applicant because the inspections, the reporting and the inspections are less burdensome than the larger projects of performance pathway. These are the larger 2,500 square feet and greater, and they do require more detailed planning and submittal for, so they're required to submit a planting plan, irrigation plan, soil information, and grading. And then for all of those, you know, there are certain standards that they have to comply with, so certain irrigation types. The planting, again, they, they also, in addition to identifying the plants, they actually have to measure as part of their equation for reducing evaporation or water loss, they have to calculate the rating on those plants as well. So they do, for their project, they do calculate the water use for that project, and that water use must fall below what's called a maximum water allowance, maximum applied water allowance. So for every area in the state, projects have, with some other factors added in, there is a maximum water allowance for each project that gets calculated, and the water use for that site has to fall below that maximum allowance. So how that's done is, you know, for projects of this type, they do need to be designed by a licensed professional, so that, you know, typically like an landscape architect or, you know, different types of engineers or licensed designers. So, you know, we've found that they are able to provide that information just through their training. Recently, we actually haven't had any in, I'm not sure, you know, looking back through 2015, we probably have missed a couple, but the two that we have just, they're still, actually still in the building permit stage, the orchards, 70-unit apartment buildings that the planning commission approved, that was in late last year, and now we're processing the building plan. So their designer was able to provide the informational sheets in the building set, and the same thing for the Humboldt Veterinary Facility that was just approved for Riverwalk Drive, they've provided all of these sheets in their building plan. So, you know, when you have that level of a project, you know, they are able to provide the information, and since this is a statewide thing now, it is, you know, something that they're getting used to doing. So, you know, for the smaller projects, I think it's fair that they're not required to do that level of design and calculations. And this is just the list of, for the performance compliance projects, those items that I just talked about, the landscaping, irrigation, grading, and things like that, and the worksheets that do the calculations. So for the city process, submittal of the, all of the information, this mostly applies to the performance plan. So we would review that as part of their building permit process, and then following construction of the building, so all of these landscaping projects typically will go with a building permit, that's what triggers it on the city side, building permits and design review applications is what the state law says. It would also be a condition of approval for a conditional use permit, and then they do, for the larger ones, they get inspected after construction by a certified irrigation specialist, so that's just someone who has some training that's approved by the state. And then after that, demonstrating compliance with the MLLO, then the building department would issue the certificate of occupancy for the, for the building. So that's the, that's kind of what our leverage is for having, you know, their inspection and their full compliance. There's a couple of other, there's a couple of reporting or final reporting sheets that get turned in as well. And the flow chart, kind of what I just went over, I won't go over each one of these, but this just does lay out the process for exempt projects, and then for that 500 square feet or greater, if they only have irrigation, or if they don't have irrigation, then they just follow the minor irrigation standards. For larger projects, the prescriptive or the performance pathways are followed. We do have an annual report through each January 31st, you know, just to Department of Water Resources. We have been doing this reporting since 2015. I think we're going to be doing more reporting now that, you know, the requirements are stricter and obviously, you know, with the droughts and things that have been going on, not this year, unfortunately. So, you know, I think we're going to be doing a lot more of these, just tightening up our process. So the proposed ordinance will add 15.49 to the Buildings and Construction Code under the Fortuna Municipal Code, it'll adopt MLLO by reference, so we're not incorporating the entirety into our code, it's just, it's the equivalent of doing that. But this way, when, if and when MLLO gets modified in the future by DWR, then it'll automatically be incorporated, and we won't have to go through this process every time, or we won't be out of compliance, it'll keep us in compliance. So that's the recommendation, and that's the end of the presentation, I'll pass it back to the council.
Thank you, Liz. Any questions from council?
Liz, excellent job on one of your last presentations that you had to do, and thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with this, the green grass to play with your kids is gone? Is that what I hear?
Not gone. 25% is allowed.
So 500 square feet?
No, that's, 500 square feet is exempt.
But if you have 2,500, you only get 25%, so you only get 500 square feet, so you got 25 by 25 area?
No, there is an allowance for recreational, so recreational is not included in the regulated area. So actually...
Like my front yard, if I had grass in my front yard, I couldn't...
Yeah, turf is, turf is regulated, turf is regulated 25%. Recreational turf is not included in the calculation, so you can have recreational turf, and it's, it doesn't fall under the MLLO.
Is that for personal use, or like recreational, like our parks?
We're still looking into the exact application, so it's, it's in the code, we haven't defined that 100% yet.
Okay.
We're in the process, and we'll get, we'll get back to you on that.
So they don't want you to have grass in your front and backyard?
It's the, they're trying to reduce irrigated landscape.
Oh, so you can have dead grass.
Or you can have Astro turf. Thank you, California.
You know, and it doesn't, it doesn't really apply in Humboldt County or Dillmark County, you know, unfortunately, but we are being drawn into it.
I remember first seeing landscape ordinance back in 12, 2012, and it was actually part of a stormwater permit, MS4 permit, and there was some sample language that the state and the North Coast Stormwater Coalition paid to have somebody come up with, and this looks like the state took that and then gave it some vitamins and then made it a mandate. That's pretty much what it is.
Yeah, it is a mandate.
Councilmember Johnson, if I could just add one thing to that, too, they've been looking for a way to really put the teeth into this, and so the latest vehicle is SB 1383. So right now, we've been issued a compliance schedule by CalRecycle, so CalRecycle is taking this on and adopting it, and so we have a compliance action plan, so if we don't adopt this, and then also a construction and demolition debris minimization ordinance, then the city would be in a situation where it could receive some fines, and I would just like to thank Liz, you know, of running right up to the finish line. She actually drafted the construction and demolition debris ordinance as well, but didn't get it back from our city attorney. She had two other staff reports on the council consent agenda tonight, and so she really finished strong, and I just want to say I appreciate Liz finishing these last few and the last night before her last day of being able to present another ordinance, so thanks, Liz, for putting this together.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Okay, open public comment. Anybody from the public have any?
Good evening, council. I'm Jeremy Stanfield, citizen of Fortuna. Thank you for the presentation, it was so much information, I hope I remember all my questions. First with gray water, is there, is there like a suggestion of how to capture sink drain water or something like that in order to use that as a mitigating factor? Or captured water? I didn't know that that was actually allowed. Is it?
Yes. So they don't have recommendations for, you know, how to do that, but it reduces, it reduces your water, the water usage, so you're further below, so it's, it doesn't get included as strongly. It has a smaller factor in the water use equation.
And then, is this only triggered by brand-new construction or extensive remodel?
New construction and remodel.
Both remodel as well?
They call it rehabilitation.
So if there's an existing irrigation system, is it exempt?
I haven't seen the section that is retroactive to existing projects.
Okay. And does it prevent any citizen from just using a above-ground system?
If it's new construction and requires a permit, then there are, there are standards on the types of irrigation features or, you know, facilities.
Sorry. I'm asking questions to your staff.
You know the rules.
What's that?
I said, and you know the rules.
Adam, mayor, may I speak? No, I think that's all my questions. I was just, you know, wondering about contractors and the extra hoops they may have to jump through. Last question, actually, was the question about the certified person that actually approves the plan, is that something that's going to become as additional training with your current planning department or building official, or is that going to be an outside extra cost to the city or a contractor or?
Do you have...
Through the mayor, I could probably, you know, I think what we'll do is have one of our staff get the training and receive the certification, either in our engineering department or in our planning department, but I'm determined right now. But that's our thought, is to handle in-house and not send those out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? CNN will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to hold the first reading of ordinance 2023-759, read by title only, and continue the public hearing to Monday, May 1st, 2023, for the second reading.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Ordinance 2023-759, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adding Chapter 15.49 to Title 15 of the Fortuna Municipal Code, Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
I wish I could vote no, but I don't think we have a choice. Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Okay, and our last item on the agenda for tonight would be to approve an updated organizational chart and pay classification change for Community Development Department and task order on on-call planning service with SHN.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. And since Liz Shory missed her chance to slip out before this item, I'm going to just say a couple of things. Liz is retiring tomorrow, it will be her last day, and so she leaves really big shoes to fill. Liz has been with the city for 22 years, since 2001, and so that means she's been through 10 or 11 different city councils, she's worked with more than six city managers, and I think we counted 10 city engineers. So Liz is amongst our top three longest-serving employees, and just talking to Liz over the last few days and last week, just the scope of institutional knowledge you have, it's a little daunting, it's got me really nervous about what happens after tomorrow, but Liz has really done a great job of really trying to prepare us and put together some lists. But Liz has worked on a lot of notable projects, John Campbell Memorial, Greenway Master Plan, the annexation of Riverwalk Area, Strong's Creek, the development of the 2010 to 2030 General Plan, numerous building subdivisions, and notable building projects including Open Door, McLean Campus, Police Facility, and more, and I think more ordinances that we can count, I wouldn't even attempt, but Liz, I don't know, what's a guess, probably 100 or more? Okay, 30 or 40. So, and much more than I can even keep track of, and every time we start talking about things that need to be done in her department, it makes me really nervous not having her there. So I'm having a hard time believing that Liz won't be sitting over in that chair at the, at the next, the next meeting. So thank you, Liz, again, for finishing strong, and I'll, I'll get to the point of the agenda item now. So, so staff is recommending that the council approve changing the position from deputy director, you know, adding a new position to the org chart of director and eliminating the position of deputy director. Staff is also recommending that moving this new director of community development from step number F54 to F66 in the 2022-23 full-time pay rate schedule. Staff is also, this is kind of a two-part, because we need some interim help when Liz leaves, we'll, staff is also requesting that the council approve a task order with SHN to provide on-call planning services until a new staff person is hired to replace Ms. Shory. And SHN acquired a few years back, they acquired Streamline Planning, and so a gentleman named Bob Brown runs that, and he has a team of... And so a gentleman named Bob Brown runs that and he has a team of planners. And so they've agreed. It's actually kind of hard. We talked to a few different companies that were able to provide those, those interim planning measures. And a lot of them are very busy or they're trying to hire and they don't have enough staff themselves. So I know SHN is also really busy, but they said they'd be willing to help us out. And so if this is approved, they'll be in a transition meeting tomorrow to go over some things with Liz and I and, and talk about those. So I'm pleased that, that we will, we do have an option for some interim help. We're expecting, and, and SHN, if the council recalls, we have an on-call contract with SHN that resulted from a, a competitive recruitment for on-call planning and engineering services. So we ended up establishing on-call contracts with a number of planning and engineering firms, and SHN was one of those. So we just need to do a task order authorizing the budget and the work rather than doing a whole new contracting process. So that's one of the easy things about going with services under one of those on-call contracts. We expect it'll at least take two to three months to fill the vacancy. And, and on-call planning services will be needed during that time. We've anticipated a budget amount of about twenty thousand dollars for that on-call planning work. And a draft of that task order is, is attached. It's pretty basic and just basically lists some of the, some of the standard on-call services that would be provided. But it would be reviewing new subdivision applications, route, you know, reviewing building permits and other projects for conformance with the city zoning ordinance and general plan and, or the Model Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance, if the second reading happens, and, and going through some of the steps there. But really, it's, it's, it's all the work that Liz would be doing on a normal day-to-day basis and, and perhaps, you know, assisting our administrative assistant in that department. The cost for that, the financial impact, it really would be offset by the salary savings that the city would see. So we don't expect there to be a big difference. The potential impact really is what we're going to see next year if we bring somebody on board. You can see there's a table presented in the staff report of what the salary range is for the deputy director of community development opposed to the proposed community development director position, which would be about sixteen thousand dollars more at the minimum salary and about twenty thousand dollars more at the maximum salary. So, you know, this is one, I feel like the, you know, it's probably been long overdue. The community development department really could use a department head in that level. And, and I don't know exactly the reasons why it hasn't gone that direction, whether, whether it's budget savings or, you know, whether the, the city councils wanted the city manager to have more oversight. But I think at this point, the department would be best served by having a specific department head for community development and not putting that on a deputy director who works for the city manager, because the city manager is typically torn in a million different directions. And it's, it's hard to focus and true, and serve as a true department head for that department. I mean, it's possible and doable. We've been doing it, but it does put a lot more on the deputy director. So that's my recommendation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the specific language of the recommendation is in there, but essentially allocate a community development director position, remove deputy community development director position, and make the correlating changes to the two thousand and twenty-three, two, twenty-three full-time pay rate schedule and organizational chart, and approve a task order for on-call planning services with SHN.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Question, but just like a historical comment. I think we had the deputy director position because in past, city managers wanted to continue the control and kept the director of community development title, even though it doesn't show up in any of the city manager titles. But I think that the job was kept there, even though the deputy director did all the work. That's the best I can think of there.
And if you go back a little, back into the nineties and right up to two thousand, there was a city manager that used to be a planner.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public have any comments on this item? See, and then we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to allocate a community development director position and remove a deputy community development director position, make correlating changes to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three full-time pay rate schedule, and approve a task order for on-call planning services with SHN.
Okay, we have a first and second. This is voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? And I just wanted to say, Liz, I've had the pleasure of working with you for twenty years, ten on the planning commission and ten on the council. So I've been here almost as long as you have. I wish you lots of enjoyment in your retirement, you know. So move it on to a new step, scary but exciting.
Yeah, well, thank you. I forgot that, I didn't realize it was ten years on the planning commission. But yeah, that's, that's amazing, too. Yeah, and it's truly been wonderful. It's truly been amazing. Just, I've loved it. I couldn't have asked for, you know, more fulfilling, more just adventism, interesting job and to be right in the city. And, you know, it's, it's really great. But, you know, over the last week, I've just been thinking about just all the wonderful people. Like, you know, you guys are, you know, I always hear you say, oh, you know, the city workers, they work so hard, they're so dedicated. And I just am amazed. I mean, that's what I keep thinking about is everyone truly works their hardest and is really committed and I think does a really good job for the city. And yeah, I'm, I'm going to miss it. I'm really happy to be entering this new adventure. And, you know, I hope to have more time to do things, you know, like volunteer for the rodeo and auto expo, like I see all of you guys doing and having so much fun and just, and a lot of things. My to-do list is, is, is fulfilling and long. So, yeah, and thank you. I tell people out on the street, we really have the best, you know, city council and we have had for a long time. And it makes it really nice to work with such a good council. So yeah, thank you.
Well, you've got so much knowledge. You're welcome to come back to any of the council meetings when you think there's something we need to know.
I will. And I've told them to call me. You know, I know they won't because they'll be like, oh, I don't want to bother her. But really, I'd be really, it'd make me feel good to share that knowledge.
Well, I'm looking forward to seeing you at our events.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Just a few meeting announcements for the upcoming meetings. We have a special budget workshop on Monday, April twenty-fourth at nine o'clock AM at city council. And so our finance director and staff will be presenting the draft budget. And our next regular council meeting will be on May first at six o'clock PM. Our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, but that is likely to be canceled. Actually, Liz's retirement is coming somewhat as a good time. We're seeing a little bit of lull in, in some of our new applications. We do have a number of projects that we're waiting for re-submittals on, but they won't be in time for that meeting. So it's likely the meeting on the twenty-fifth will be canceled. But we will need to have the next planning commission meeting on May ninth. And by that time, we should have our on-call consultant up to speed to be able to assist at that meeting. On our next Measure E meeting is on September nineteenth, quite a ways out there. Our next Roner Community Recreation Park District meeting will be on May third. And then a new meeting, we're going to, we'll give you the updated dates, but our, the Fortuna Business Improvement District, EPID, will be meeting the last Tuesday of every month at eight-thirty. So the next meeting for EPID is at, on April twenty-fifth. And just a, just a couple of items to, to note. I, I met with the new owner of the majority of the Fortuna mill site. He came to town last week. And I just wanted to let the council know that the work on that specific plan is moving forward at a very good pace. The developer is really still showing an interest in working in the city, providing their site plans to try to tie those in and give us a chance to review them so that they're really in concert with the city's effort and not in conflict. And so we have a great working relationship. And I was able to meet with him last week. Our police have also been assisting on some of the trespassing issues. I think they removed twenty-five shopping carts last Saturday. And they're really trying to help enforce some of the trespassing and littering that's been happening there. We are exploring alternatives to working with Riverlife Foundation and Sean Swanson. We did meet with John Shelter. He's, he owns New Directions, which is a company that does similar things to what Riverlife did. They're not a nonprofit, though. They're for, a for-profit company, but they have a lot of clients in the northern part of the county and all the way down south to Garberville. And they, they also have, do a really good job with referrals and outreach for substance abuse, substance abuse treatment and, and unhoused people. And so, you know, we're starting to look at that as a potential alternative to the contract with Riverlife Foundation. And then one of the other things that I'm working with our police chief on, as we've been talking a lot lately, we're starting to see some of the settlement funds come in from the opioid settlements with the various drug manufacturers and distributors. And so we're really thinking about ways how we can put that money back to use. They're limited to, you know, certain subset of things, like that, that really offset some of the direct impacts of opioids on the community. So we're really hoping we can kind of think of effective ways to help get people rehabilitated, you know, get some of the message out and warning to, you know, education programs for schools and really try to just get the word out and use that money efficiently. So we're excited about that opportunity. It's one of our pet projects that the chief and I will be working on together. And again, just a lot of time and effort is going to go into making sure that we pick up the community development department task that, that Liz is going to be leaving behind for, for dog walking and other things that will be in her immediate near future instead of showing up to the planning department. So there's quite a bit there in that transition that we've been, I've been focused on over the last week or two. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any future item, future agenda items you'd like to see? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you. I had a redact meeting, it seems like forever ago since we didn't have the, the third meeting. But we voted in a couple more loans and also had a presentation for a group that is trying to be one voice heard on the wind, solar wind project. So that was kind of a good, good presentation by them. And then I just want to say I commend the city staff and Cameron's crew out there mowing all the lawns with a day notice and a day break and trying to get as much done as they can and watch them out there every day when I drive by Newburgh Park. And it's just like that, that soccer field's a swamp. So that they keep up and they're doing the best they can right in between the, you know, rains and all that. So good job, Cameron and his crew.
Thank you. Councilmember Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll echo his comments about the park staff. They just do an excellent job, both Newburgh, Ronerville, as well as the, down Fortuna Boulevard. We did have a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on April tenth. And that was at the Roner Park Hall. And we had a good report from Cameron with a lot of the things that had been going on. If you've been in Roner Park, you hopefully noticed the new basketball courts that are being redone. The rain's going to interrupt that a little bit, but I think it'll continue. And it's going to be a huge improvement over what we had there before. It's going to be totally fenced in. So there will be a loss of some parking in certain times like Rodeo Week, Autorama, actually, it's Auto Expo, that they used to either park or have presentations on the basketball courts. They won't be able to do that now. But they're doing an excellent job on it. The backboards are going to be a polycarbonate backboard, so it shouldn't break. And padding on the posts to protect those, those players. And again, it'll all be fenced in. Coming up on May twenty-seventh, we're going to have pastels in the park. And they had a pretty good turnout last year, but, and hopefully it's not going to rain. But their staff is going to do a little bit better job of broadcasting this and getting the information out so we have even more people taking part. Also, coming up, you might have heard about Forest Moon, a celebration of the Return of the Jedi movie and all of the different locations in Humboldt County that it was filmed at. I think there was at least two. Anyway, it's a celebration of that movie. And I think just about every city and county are going to take part in some type of a celebration that is called the Forest Moon. And our staff is going to put on a celebration. Don't know what it's going to contain, but that will be June second, either June second, that's a Friday, or June third, which is a Saturday. And that's also the Little League Jamboree in Fortuna. So we should have a huge turnout, not only for the jamboree, because that always brings a lot of people into town, but also for the Forest Moon celebration. So look forward to doing that. Staff is also talking about applying for disaster, federal and state disaster repair, disaster funds for repairing the Monday Club chimney and seeing if we can get some funds to, to help with those repairs after the earthquake. Staff is still doing repairs on other areas of the earthquakes or other areas that were caused from the earthquakes, including lights in, in Newburgh Park. But I think, I think they're starting to catch up a little bit more from some of those issues. I think that's all I have to, to report on.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley?
Thank you. We had an RCEA meeting on March twenty-third. It was our first in-person meeting, which was much more interesting and more, it, we were able to share ideas a little easier than via Zoom. Their twentieth anniversary, they're celebrating on April twenty-eighth at Mad River Brewery between three and six, and the public is invited. We did an EPID meeting on March twenty-eighth. Our newest member is Monica Martinez. We are reviewing the current logo and banners for downtown to see what is needed for updated banners. I attended the Fortuna Rotary fundraiser last Thursday. They had an excellent turnout. They raised, it's our major fundraiser and they raised funds for scholarships. They give out about twenty-five thousand dollars worth every year. It was a really good turnout. And I'm asked quite a bit about the Fortuna Theater. And when it might be reopening or being worked on or maybe put up for sale or? But that is all I have to-
I'll just give one update. Yeah, one of the items, yeah. So I've been in touch, I'm trying to remember his last name, Dave, with Cinema West. And I, Dave Corkrell, yeah. And he, I talked to him and he has a number of movie projects going, including building other theaters. And I let him know that the city's definitely interested in seeing the theater reopen and offered help if there's anything we could do. We talked about business loan funds. We talked about trying to help get qualified contractors, but they had some damage that was a result of the earthquake breaking some of the fire lines. So they have water damage to drywall. But it sounds like this theater just isn't a, I probably shouldn't say too much, but anyway, he, it, you know, it's, it's, they're putting a lot of their investment in other theaters that have a lot more moviegoers than this one right now. But we, I also checked back with him last week. So we know the importance of the theater and how important those kind of recreational opportunities are in the city. So I'm continuing to stay in touch with him and trying to do whatever we can to incentivize him to open the theater back up.
Interested in maybe selling it to another party or not at this point?
He did express interest in that as well. So I'm sure he would listen if there's somebody out there who is interested. And just one correction, too. The EPID board recommended Monica Martinez, but we didn't bring that back to the council. We expect to bring that back on May first.
I had a phone call today about the theater. Yeah. Okay, Mike Johnson?
Okay, I have a, be attending the Crowley Wind Services grand opening ribbon cutting for their new office and getting that kicked off. And they're a big marine services company and getting into the wind end of things kind of fits right into their alley. And they're having a ribbon cutting and a reception Wednesday at the Warfinger. Then on Thursday, we have HCOG meeting, kind of full agenda like we had today ourselves here. And looking forward to that. And I think the, following that in, second week in May, I believe, is the next historical commission meeting. And I'll be attending that. And I will report back on the results of all three of those things when they have happened. Thank you.
Thank you. And I attended the League of California Cities meeting in Arcata. Arcata hosted the last one. And we had a presentation. They have started a, a new community ambassador program that, which they found the perfect people for that. And these people actually go out, walk around the streets, talk to the homeless people.
the homeless people, build relationships, you know, so they can try to help these people and do cleanup and stuff like this. Their program is working pretty good for them. So that was really interesting to hear. And then our second meeting, we talked about a lot of the new bills and whether to support or reject them. So it was, it was overall a good meeting. We'll be hosting one here in August. And I have been attending every Thursday afternoon the Measure Z, county's tax measure meetings, and it looks as if, I mean, there's, the tax base is way down and there's not much money to allocate. Normally, there's about four million. This year, there's about eight hundred thousand. So there's a lot of people asking for the money, and so I have been pushing really hard to get our drug task force and our school resource officer. It will be highly unlikely that we get the, the school resource officer fully funded. I'm hoping maybe partially funded for this year. And then we started an ad hoc committee from Measure Z, which I also am on, and we've been meeting there to talk about ways to reserve some funding for the outside agencies, and so it's not all absorbed into new employees and stuff. So we've been working on that. So that's been keeping us really busy. And that's all I have to report, so anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
You guys want to stay here all night?
I'll second.
Motion, or meeting adjourned.